Okay, we sit on C. Counselor Taylor, but I'm going to go ahead and get started with Iowa City City Council regular meeting for June 16th, 2020. Roll call, please. And may have, roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Ma'ams.
Here.
Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor. Teague.
I can't hear Kelly.
Teague.
We can hear Bruce.
We can hear.
I can't hear anybody. That's one second.
Problematic.
Now I think I can.
Okay. Teague.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right. Well, sorry about the technical challenges here starting out, and hopefully we will be able to move on with very few. Welcome to everybody that is joining us here at Iowa City. And typically, our meetings are at 7:00 PM for formal meetings such as this, but this one is at 5:00 PM today. We do have another one tonight at 7:00 PM, and that'll be a one-item agenda that will be related to, the item on that agenda is going to be related to Black Lives Matter movement, systemic racism and police policies. And also, so that'll be happening at 7:00 PM tonight. So this meeting have a full agenda, but that item is going to be at 7:00 PM. Could I get a motion to approve consent calendar? Well, actually, we're going to go to items number two through seven. And could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Oh, by solid.
Can hit Weiner.
Okay, anyone in the public like to address anything that is on our consent calendar? If you do, there is a raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, and I will call your name. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Seeing no one? Counsel discussion?
I just have a couple of things, just really quick. On 3A, this is from the CPRB minutes. Want to express appreciation for some adjustment, it looks like, in one of the standard operating guidelines that regards the use of social media in investigations. We had an issue earlier in the spring that there was some concern about, so evidently the CPRB has looked at that and discussed that with police and made some adjustments, so I was glad to see that. And then 5A, the calling of the lease early on the Harrison Street parking ramp, that's something that we've talked about in terms of giving us some flexibility with some budgeting and moving some money. But I think if you look at like the last paragraph of that memo, it's really important for all of us to keep in mind that there's still significant financial issues in the parking fund due to the COVID-19. So thank you to Dennis and others on, you know, and Jeff and everybody on looking at that, getting rid of that lease early, but we still have some major financial issues there that we need to keep in mind. So just those two items. Thank you.
Anyone else? And I do see Counselor Taylor has joined us. Welcome. All right. If no further discussion, roll call, please, and unmute your phones or your tablets.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Sully. Taylor. Taylor.
Yes, sorry, technical difficulties.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight, which is our community comment opportunity for anyone in our, that is here that would like to address counsel on any item that is not on our agenda. And if I see two hands raised, I'm going to call you in order that I see them on my screen. So Nicholas, I assign, followed by Anthony.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for letting me speak again this evening. As always, I'm going to get back on my hobby horse of affordable housing and council's generally lackadaisical approach to the housing issues in Iowa City. I ran over a little bit last time, so I just want to leave you with a thought, since it's related to another item on your agenda, although I don't want to speak to that item, it's just related. So I've been communicating with Tracy Heichu, who, by the way, I'd like to commend, she is a wonderful person, especially since her boss decided to ignore my questions and have her answer them instead, but that's neither here nor there. Again and again, I keep hearing the number $1 million, $1 million. It sounds like a lot of money. The city is spending $1 million on affordable housing. $1 million is not a lot of money, especially when it comes to housing. I mean, when you consider the fact that the median home price in Iowa City is over $200,000, that's not even five homes, not even five homes. And then we consider the fact that the city basically gives away 70% of that money to another organization, a perfectly fine organization. It means that the city itself actually isn't really doing that much. And in relation to item later on the agenda, the city is currently thinking about spending $1.23 million to move a house, one house, an old house, a very nice house, again, a fine project, but you're not even spending as much on the totality of housing as you are on moving an old house from one location to another. So I'd like you to keep that in the back of your minds as you keep bringing up affordable housing in other contexts, because honestly, I'm just going to keep saying it, you're not doing enough. The magnitude of the crisis is huge, you have the resources to deal with it, so please get off your turkeys and do something about it. And that's it, that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
I am here, Mayor.
Thank you, Nicholas. We'll have Anthony, followed by Susanna.
Hi, this is Anthony. Kelly Fröling has materials that I sent to them. If they are able to screen share those.
Okay, are you able to see that?
No.
No, let me move it here. Now?
No.
No. No.
Okay. I should be able to share, and I've got screen.
All right, I think it's starting.
I've been speaking to a few community members about different legislative parties they had, and something that got brought up was ballot initiatives and referendum. So I've been speaking with the city clerk for a few days now, who's been very, very helpful in figuring this process out, because there are only five cities in Iowa with charters that allow for ballot referendum. And we did come to a finding, which I wanted to bring to city council's attention to help resolve. On the right here, you can see where ballot petitions and referendum are, or sorry, ballot initiatives and referendums are outlined in the city charter. It's under section 7.05, specifically under B, submission to voters. The first item says that the vote of the city on a proposed measure should be held at the regular city election, or at the general election, which next occurs more than four days after. And then there's, there's a period which is elaborated on previously in that section. So from a regular reading that we saw from this, it seemed that the purpose of this was that initiatives would be able to be voted on by Iowa City electors every year, every general election, so November of insert year here. However, a bill passed last year, let me just pull out what exact number that was, House File 692 in 2019 passed, has a measure that says for a city in an odd number year, the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday in September, or the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, that is for ballot initiatives. So essentially, there was a preemption that now makes it so Iowa City could only vote on ballot referendums and initiatives every two years during regularly scheduled city elections. Under the current charter, you could not actually have any general election, so 2020, 2022, 2024 ballot referendum. It seemed to me that this was unexpected and not the original intent of the charter. So I wanted to bring that up through whichever amendment process Iowa City has for adjusting its charter and would recommend trying to put in some language so that if any bill in the future did change the timeline, hopefully it could, it could fix it so this problem doesn't come around again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And, yep, so thank you, Nicholas, and now we will have Susanna. And you're on mute. There you go.
Okay. All right. I'm so sorry, this is really the first time I've been involved, and I, I did vote though for a lot of you that are sitting there, and it's so good to see you. I feel like I'm a little tardy in bringing this up, but it was brought to my attention that there is money that's been, that may be available for helping combat the coronavirus. And, and I would just like to strongly suggest some of it being used for masks as well as shields. And it kind of can be seen as part of the seven o'clock meeting, but I just think health-wise, how, just wondering how we can make it available to people somehow. I'm not exactly sure, and all the thoughts on that, but I just think it would help just most, most of us people, sorry, those of us that are soon to be 65 or older, be able to be more involved too in what's happening in our community and feel better about being out and being able to talk freely with people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel? Seeing no hands raised. We will move on to item number nine, planning and zoning matters. 9A rezon in 1335 Highway 1 West, ordinance conditionally resona approximately 0.53 acres of land located at 1335 Highway 1 West from intensive commercial to CL1. This is second consideration. Can I get a motion to consider it?
Don't move, Thomas.
Second.
Okay, counsel discussion. And I, I'm not sure if there's anyone in the public that would like to address this topic. If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Seeing non-counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 9B Westside Estates, Phase 2 subdivision, resolution approving a preliminary plat of Westside Estates, Phase 2 subdivision, a 13.10 acre subdivision consisting of 39 residential lots located north of Rowett Road, southwest and west of Yuma Drive. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, ma'ams.
All right, do we have a presentation by staff?
Yes, Mayor, we have to make one. If we can have the host or the city clerk enable screen sharing again, I do have some slides to show. I'm getting an error message that says it's disabled. There we go, just a sec. Okay, this is a preliminary plat for land located in the yellow highlight here, just west of the, west of 218 on Rowett Road. This is a request by the Watts Group Development for a single-family subdivision consisting of 38 single-family lots and one outlot. The subject property shown here in the zoning map and here as the plat was previously platted in 2007 under a different name. That plat expired due to inactivity in 2019, and they're requesting essentially the same layout to be replanted under a different name at this time. As you can see here, the plat circled in yellow is an extension of the development that's occurred to the east of it, including the street network and generally the layout of the lots. Again, as I said, this is essentially the same subdivision layout that was proposed two years ago, and at that time in 2017, that Good Neighbor meeting was conducted. So in the review of preliminary plots, staff uses several criteria for review, including any conditional zoning agreement stipulations that were placed on that, approval for the rezoning, as well as the comprehensive plan and our subdivision and other ordinances. The conditions that were placed at the time of rezoning, we have tracked the ones that have been met and are continuing to track the ones that are unmet. The unmet conditions are items that need to be fulfilled with the final plat after this stage, and include a contribution of funds for road improvements. So as I said, staff does review the components of the plat as well as performance of the comprehensive plan. In this case, it continues to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan for the type and density proposed when reviewed against the Southwest District Plan. Also, the streets and circulation are reviewed. This subdivision is providing connections internally through loop streets and externally to the neighborhood around it. In the past, Rowett Road has been improved to city standards within vicinity of this development. There will be no additional improvements made to Rowett Road at this time, however, additional land is being dedicated by this developer to make way for future improvements, should they be necessary. Those improvements to Rowett Road would be installed primarily on the northern portion of the right-of-way, so keeping the southern right-of-way line as it is now and any improvements occurring within that right-of-way. We also evaluated open space and have notified the developer of the requirement for open space. It can be met by Fee and Lou. In this circumstance, we've also reviewed stormwater and infrastructure. As I mentioned, the developer will be required to pay 50% of the cost of improving the street of Rowett Road as they proceed through their final plating. So looking at this application in the context of the development process, we can see we're here at the blue highlighted stage, which is the preliminary plat for the renamed subdivision. And then they would go through a final plat eventually after the preliminary plat is reviewed by you. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to three to approve this plat at their June 4th meeting. Staff did recommend approval based on a review of the relevant criteria. There were comments received by the Planning Commission for the plat. They largely had to do with the widening of the right-of-way for Rowett Road, and additional information was provided at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to the folks in the community who had concerns about that, and they seemed satisfied at that time. Of course, I was always welcome to present their concerns to you again as well. So staff and the Planning Commission did recommend approval. That's my presentation. Mayor, I think you do need to unmute yourself.
We're having fun with the Zoom tonight. Sorry about that. Any questions for staff, for Danielle?
I just had one question. This is the first one that I've seen in my tenure on council, where there's been kind of this delay of a few years from the prior steps in the process until now. Can you just talk a little bit about if, if you feel like that impacted this, or, you know, I just want to make sure that, like, the people who were, would have received notice at different stages did, and if you have any concerns about that. I mean, it looks like that was pretty well vetted at the planning and zoning meeting based on their minutes, but if you could maybe just clarify that.
So as I mentioned, a Good Neighbor meeting was held in 2017 at the time of the pre-lim plat under the other name. That was a totally voluntary step, but we highly encourage folks to do. Regardless of that, staff does send out a notice to property owners within a certain distance of the plat, letting them know there's going to be a meeting regardless, so that the word gets out that something is occurring. We did get a lot of feedback that people had gotten that notice or had heard from folks that got the notice and had concerns that wanted more time to discuss it, but they were aware of the project and did come to the Planning Commission meeting and make known their concerns at that time. So there is a process, both voluntary and the mailing the city does to get the word out.
Thank you.
Great. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. We have John Marner. And please keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Mr. Mayor. John Marner with MMS Consultants. We're the civil engineering company that's been working with Watts Development Group on this, on this application for the preliminary plat. I think Danielle covered all of the comments and some of the things that we come up during this preliminary plat process. Like she mentioned, it's a plat that was previously approved in 2017. Nothing has substantially changed from that original plat that was approved. It's the same number of lots, same general street layout. It's got some smaller lots out to the front along Rowett Road. We have dedicated, there were a few minor changes to storm and sanitary, storm sewer and sanitary sewer, that we worked through those concerns with staff to get those revisions incorporated as well. Rowett Road, I know that conversation has come up as far as the additional right-of-way. All of that right-of-way is being dedicated on the north side of Rowett Road for possible future improvements by the city. I'd also point out that when the subdivision, Westside Estates, Phase 1, was completed to the east, a portion of Rowett Road was improved at that time. If you, if you note what took place at that time, we tried to maintain the south edge of the pavement, and we shifted the center line of the road to the north and put all of the improvements on the north side there as well. I can't speak for the city, but I believe the intent would be to do something similar, to try and minimize the impacts on the south side of the road as much as possible. I think to address one of the questions from one of the council, council members earlier, the subdivision was constructed in 20, or was started in 2017. They went ahead and built out Phase 1. The preliminary plat lapsed. The intent was always to go through, to follow through and build Phase 2. It was just a timing issue. I think development's been moving along fairly well out there currently. You know, there's good schools out there. It's a nice area of town. It's a potential growth area for town, moving forward, and they're ready to move forward with Phase 2 and continue to put some more units out in that area.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, counsel discussion?
It seemed that, that much of the concern brought up by petitioners to P&amp;G, to P&amp;Z had to do with the, what they would potentially do with Rowett, which sounds like it probably has been addressed now, since they just said that this would be solely on the northern side instead of on the southern side. There also, there also seem to be a fair number of concerns with respect to the timing. They wanted more time. They wanted the meeting postponed, but I'm not seeing that there would have been any great difference.
This is Pauline, and I think it was noted at the P&amp;Z meeting that it was going to come before the council, and that folks could speak before the council if they had, still had those concerns. And it doesn't appear that we had any public that wanted to comment on this tonight.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero. 9C, conditional use permit, 37, 30, 30, 37, and 30, 31, IWV Row Southwest, a letter of recommendations of the Johnson County Board of Adjustment for an application submitted for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial storage facility at 30, 37, and 30, 31, IWV Row Southwest and unincorporated Johnson County. Can I get a motion to approve?
Taylor, so moved.
Second, ma'ams.
All right, we have presentation by staff.
Thanks, Mayor. Now, this is an application for a conditional use permit located in Johnson County, submitted by Nikkehman for the construction of a commercial storage facility located in the yellow highlight here. For context, this is the zoning map, the purple area is Iowa City landfill, and green area is agricultural zoning. The subject property is located in our fringe area C, but outside of the city's growth boundary. This agreement with the fringe area does allow for a review and comment by the city on this proposed conditional use permit. This is being heard by the county's, sorry, Board of Adjustment. So it's a little bit different process on their side, somewhat similar to our process that we got through with our Board of Adjustment for special exceptions. So what we do when we review these fringe area agreements is consult with the conference, a plan in the fringe area agreement itself. This is, as it is a component of the comprehensive plan that we've adopted. So while the city's preference is to locate commercial land uses within the city via city limits, a conditional use permit's a little bit different than a rezoning. You've seen rezonings in the past, where staff has taken the stance that a commercial rezoning is not appropriate. Conditional use permit is only changing the use for this one specific thing to be constructed, not giving the permission for all kinds of commercial development to occur. So it's a little bit more focused analysis and does also, because this is a commercial development, include the site plan review steps by the county, by the county. So staff, and in this instance, is, is comfortable with this particular proposed conditional use permit because of those factors making this somewhat different than just a blanket rezoning of land outside of our growth boundary for commercial. As I said, this is going before the county's Board of Adjustment, so the letter that you would submit would go to them for their consideration as they proceed through this process. They would do also a site plan review at the county level, and the county does also have the ability to place the conditions they see fit for this development as they would through their, through their consideration of the, of the conditional use permit. So based on the analysis of the proposed project against the policies of our fringe area agreement, staff did recommend approval, and at their June 4th meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Danielle. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call you by name. And if you're on the phone, press star nine to chime in. Sandy.
Hi, this is Sandy Style with MMS Consultants. I'm John Marner's coworker that you just heard from. I'm representing Nikkehman on the storage facilities that we're going to do on IWV. I just want to clarify for everybody, the term "commercial" is something we have to use because that's what's in the county ordinance. These are going to be more or less for RV, boat storage, extra vehicles. They're not intended to ever be set up for commercial contractor bays or anything of that sort. And the added bonus for the, the two residential properties that are there is that this building will block some of the sights and smells from the landfill down to the the sights and smells from the landfill down to the southeast. So if you have any questions for me.
Thank you for sharing, Sandy. Anyone else from the public like to address council? Seeing none, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Daniel, Mia, Taylor?
Yes. Sorry.
E?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mems?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item ten, public hearing to authorize conveyance East Market Street to the University of Iowa. Resolution authorizes a conveyance of approximately 0.20 acres of land located on East Market Street between North Dubuque and North Clinton Streets to the University of Iowa. I'm going to open the public hearing. And staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Anne Russent with Neighborhood and Development Services. I have a presentation I'll share here. So as I mentioned, this is an item to consider conveyance of city-owned land on East Market Street to the University of Iowa in order to preserve the San Jose Gilmore House. I'd like to provide a little bit of background on this item because there is a bit of history to this. In 2018, the De Looferin Church sold the San Jose Gilmore House to the university. And after that change in ownership, there were many concerns regarding the future of the building. There were particularly concerns regarding the demolition of the building. Because of those concerns, staff along with former members of the Historic Preservation Commission analyzed potential, potential sites where the San Jose Gilmore House could be relocated. And based on that analysis, the vacant lot across the street from the San Jose Gilmore House was identified as the most appropriate site for relocation. And I have a, I have a map here I'll share shortly. In addition to that, staff secured a grant to assess the structure of the home, and the final report concluded that the building could be moved and rehabilitated. Since that report was finalized, staff worked with the university to identify potential solutions to preserve the building. And staff has reached an agreement with the university to move the building to the city-owned lot, which is across the street, and that's the agreement before the council tonight. Here's a picture of the San Jose Gilmore House. It's located at 109 East Market Street. It was built in 1843. It's the oldest known residence that remains in the city of Iowa City. Here's a map that shows the location of the San Jose Gilmore House with the red star. And across the street identified in white is the city-owned lot. To summarize the draft agreement, the city would give the, give the, to the university to preserve the San Jose Gilmore House, and the university would be, be responsible for relocating the home and include all consultant costs. Any costs associated with that move would be the university's. It would also be responsible for remodeling the house, keeping the Secretary of Interior standards in mind. And lastly, they'd be responsible for the maintenance and preservation of the home with sensitivity to the age, architecture, and historic nature for a minimum of forty years. If the university no longer has a use for the home within that forty-year period, the home would revert to city ownership. And after that forty-year period, the university would either preserve the home on-site or on another suitable property. This item was discussed at the Historic Preservation Commission's main meeting. There were some representatives in the community that came to speak on this item. There were representatives from the Hill Hill House, which is owns the property just to the east of the city-owned lot on East Market Street. They did express some concerns and had some questions regarding the university's plan. It's my understanding that the university and the Hill Hill House have since been in contact to, to address any of those concerns. There was also a representative of the Friends of Historic Preservation that spoke and supported the agreement. And then lastly, the, the commission requested that the city look at creative ways to address parking in this area, particularly for religious institutions. Lastly, the HPC did recommend that the city council authorize execution of this agreement. And that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
Do you know how much it costs to move the house?
I, I, we have estimates on that, but we don't, we don't have an actual amount at this.
How much is it?
Um. I would have to look that up.
Okay. And they moving it because they want to build something else on that area or what the reason?
That's correct.
Do you know exactly what's going to be built there?
I do not.
And Anne, is that something as we'll open up the public hearing while it is already open, we'll get public discussion, is that something you can give for Mayor Pro Tim, potentially when we come back to speak?
The estimates?
Yes.
Yeah, I can look at that now.
Okay, all right. Any more questions for staff from council?
Quick question is that will, if we're, if we would be conveying the lot, does that, even though the lot is probably larger than the house itself, will any parking be preserved or will the whole lot simply be used for the house?
There will be, I believe, some spaces for parking, but it may be for the proposed use that the university has. That may be a better question for the university. I don't know if they have a plan in place, a site plan based on the size of the, the San Jose Gilmore House.
But I think to, to counsel Giannis' question, if we are giving away the whole land, that's it, period. They can use the whole thing as long as we are approving the whole land. So it will be university used.
Correct.
Right.
Any other staff questions? Hearing none. Public discussion. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address this topic, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to no more than three to, I'm seeing hands going up, so there could be quite a few. I'm going to ask you keep your comments to three minutes. And I am going to start with Gina Lee, followed by Kevin.
Thank you. My name is Gina Lee Swain. I'm currently the board president of the Friends of Historic Preservation and formerly the chair of Historic Preservation Commission. When a city council and a community are squarely facing racial inequities amidst a pandemic, one might well ask, how important is leaving another old house? The San Jose Gilmore House was built in 1843 when Iowa was still a territory, not yet a state. Iowa's population then included 172 quote "free colored" and 16 quote "slaves." The next year, only two blocks from this house, a constitutional convention met in the half-finished stone Capitol. A few delegates spoke up for equal rights, but Iowa's discriminatory black code prevailed. That is how old this house is when enslaved people lived in Iowa, when old Capitol was still being finished, when the University of Iowa existed only on paper. This house symbolizes our earliest years as we first undertook the long, hard, and ongoing work of building a community. Tonight, almost 180 years later, please support the city-university agreement. This is a sound solution for these reasons. First, location. Although we preservationists wish the house could remain where it is, across the street can also work. And I emphasize that moving the house is a cost that the, the university will cover. Yes, up to twenty-four parking spaces will be lost on this one-fifth of an acre. The problem of parking may always face us. However, the opportunity of saving the oldest house in the original town is before us now and should not be squandered. Reason two, preservation standards. The U of Iowa will consult such standards for any outside work or inside renovation. Reason three, adaptive reuse. University agrees not only to save the building, but also to use it. This aligns with preservation goals, who don't believe old buildings should be just mothballed, and it makes economic and environmental sense. Adding the San Jose Gilmore House to the campus enriches those who will use it and those who will walk by enjoying its architecture and sensing its history. And finally, reason four, the future. U of Iowa agrees to at least forty years of stewardship of this house. Under this agreement, by 2060, forty years from us, from now, some of us will be gone. Certainly, I will be gone, but not this fine building. Please vote yes, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Kevin Boyd, followed by Nicholas.
So I had to unmute myself. Kevin Boyd, six twenty-two North Fame, Durham. Others will likely, generally has already kind of shared the, the history of the structure, and it's included in your council packet, but I, I want to speak to two additional reasons why you should approve this agreement. First, the agreement before you is really success in government cooperation and collaboration. Preserving this oldest residential structure has been a priority for, for the Historic Preservation Commission since before I, shortly after I joined. Lots of ideas and iterations have been expressed and shared through conversations between the previous owner, potential owners, interested citizens, the commission, the previous council, but particularly the university, and especially the city staff. Those last two have really worked hard to find a solution here, and, and I want to commend them for that work. And before you tonight, council members, as the results of that hard work, you have a solution before you to approve, and I encourage you to do so. Second, if approved, this will be the third project with significant city leadership where a structure has been preserved and used for a different purpose than it was built. Examples of adaptive reuse are important as we think about climate change and how to minimize construction waste and value the embodied energy in structures. So I, I just, I thank you for your time and consideration, and I urge you to support this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Hi, I just wanted to add a brief comment. I'm not really going to speak one way or the other as to whether or not council should approve this measure. I would just like to add a little context, namely the fact that this council and city in general have a really quite terrible history of simply giving away prime real estate for purposes, for basically for others to use. Now, bear in mind, this is a far more, I guess you could say, this project has far more public benefit than say, like giving away public land to build a luxury apartment complex. But at the same time, I recall it was no less than two years ago, in fact, it was probably just two years ago, that city staff and council members were going on and on and on about the importance of land banking and how important land banking is, that the city needs to preserve land for future public uses. And now that seems to have just gone poof. So I guess, I don't know, I'm really confused by what exactly council is doing. Do you just like come up with these decisions completely ad hoc now? Like, there's no real planning here. It's like you're just giving it away. You're giving it to the university. The university actually owns a lot of undeveloped land. So again, I'm not speaking for or against, but I'm curious as to why the city has to give the university land for this, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? All right, Susanna?
Yeah, I, it sure would be wonderful if there was something in there about university groups that had members with people of color could use that house for special occasions or when their family visited or, I'm not sure, but I just hope that there's a plaque that really shares that history and that, I hope we see a lot of people of color going in and out of that house. I think that's real important. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Joshua?
Is this working?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. I just wanted to, my name is Josh Mo. I live at 1036 Woodlawn Avenue, and I'm on the Board of Friends of Historic Preservation. And as most of you know, we've been advocating to save this house for years, and I just wanted to thank you all for staying the course and staying with the many, many, many challenging changes that have happened throughout the possible relocation of this house or saving of this house. And I think this is a good plan. I urge you to vote for it. And as a response to a previous person discussing land banking, I think the reason the city of Iowa City land banks is for exactly this reason, so that we have the space to preserve resources for our community. And this is just so fortunate that there is a location so close to its existing place and such an appropriate place to locate this house and something that'll really be an asset, even though it will be a university property for a period of time, it'll really be an asset to our community. So, thank you. And again, I urge you to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I am going to close the public hearing. Or, yep. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mems.
Seconded by Burgess.
Motion to approve by the resolution by Mems and then Burgess. And council discussion?
I'll just say, this is Susan. I, I will just say that I have found this project to be, I guess, problematic concerning. There's so many conflicts here with different things, giving up these parking spaces in, that are, that are greatly needed, but the need to preserve an incredibly important old house within the community. And so I, you know, I have wished it could have stayed where it was. I wish, that not being the case, that we could have found a different and maybe better, close by location. I know staff looked at all different kinds of locations, but the distance, the cost, there are all kinds of logistics, et cetera. So I will support this. But I have to say, it's, it's, in some ways, it's not a wholehearted support because I'm really concerned about the other issues in terms of giving up a valuable piece of city property and giving up that parking. But given the options, I am going to come down on the side of preserving this important house.
This is John, and I'm also supportive of the project and, you know, do want to thank all the folks over the last several years who have contributed to the effort to, to achieve this preservation. And I have to say, there was a point in the process, and we got some cost estimates for the relocation and the rehabilitation, which as I recall were roughly $650,000. It didn't look good. So I'm extremely grateful that the university has partnered with the city on coming up with a concept and a way of making this happen. This is a very significant historic building, and as we've mentioned, the fact that it will be serving a purpose and remaining more or less in the same location. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful old building. It will strengthen that particular part of town as, as we move forward in history here. I think it will serve in, in that way. I think it will serve in that way as a kind of a catalyst, potentially, for future development in that general location. I think there are options with the parking that can be explored. So I'm optimistic that we can resolve the parking issues as well.
This is Jan. Okay. I just wanted to echo what John had said and Susan. This has been, seemed like, a very long process for this project. So it's really pleasing to see it come to a final resolution, and I will be supportive of this.
My question is more, is this maybe an object lesson for the importance of protecting buildings early on through historic preservation and historic preservation overlay? Because would, I mean, I'm going to end up voting for this, but would we be in this position if the Sangsay Gilmore House had been protected? And therefore, would the university have been allowed to even consider tearing it down? That probably shows my ignorance on historic preservation, but I'm really wondering if that, if it turns, if it really is an object lesson. Yes, we've come to this agreement. But had things been different a couple of years ago or several years ago before it was sold to the university, what would be the outcome?
I'm also supportive of this agreement with the university. I had some hesitations based on the fact that this is valuable city property. But I also agree that the agreement makes sure that this building will be used. And the city's plan, you know, a couple of years ago, when we were looking at the possibility of moving it ourselves and then just mothballing it, not only was very, very expensive in terms of the upfront costs, but really didn't provide for a plan for continued use of the property. So the fact that the university, through this agreement, is obligated to maintain the property, and if they don't use the property, it reverts to the city, and the fact that they will be remodeling it as well as in the process after they move it, so it's not just sitting mothballed. That was really significant to me, that adaptive reuse for whatever it will hold for the future in many decades to come.
Yeah, I guess when I say my comment is not by any means to the Historic Preservation Commission or the friend of, for the Historic Preservation. My comment actually to the council member and the city staff. I guess for the commission and for the friend of the Historic Preservation, I want to say I understand the importance of preserving the first house in Iowa City. That's very important. I understand that, there is no problem on that. And I'm going to end in, just to make you feel better, I will end voting yes for that. But I have to say this. You know, I guess I have a concern. We always, by giving like 1 million, you know, land that worth 1 million, just like that, with a little conversation to the University of Iowa. And when it come to affordable housing, it take us forever to improve, to increase from 600 to 1 million. It took us a long time to do so. And now we giving away a land worth 1 million with a little conversation. This is really, is just like ridiculous to me. And we need to do more toward affordable housing, as Nicole said. He said earlier, 1 million is nothing. Yes, 1 million is nothing, because I see how you give it away like that. For this is really 1 million, nothing. But for affordable housing, we need more than 1 million, that's true. But we need really to have a serious conversation. Even just to add the word "plan," create plan for affordable housing on the strategic plan, it take us forever, and you guys decide not to add the word "plan." You know, just think about this. When it come, if it is no solution for housing the homeless or preserving the, you know, this house, giving 1 million to preserve this house or house a homeless, of course, I'm going to like choose housing the homeless. Yes, sometimes I just feel like we are doing some stuff that, like, make me just think how we think, what is the priority? What's the need and what's the want in this city? But the fact that the people who need affordable housing, they are not here to advocate for it, because they work too young to make a meet, because they don't have time to be on this kind of meeting, so they can't advocate. And my advice to the, you know, the Historic Preservation Friend, yes, advocate for that and come out also and advocate for affordable housing for those people, because those people cannot be here. We always, we struggle doing affordable housing for a long time, even though I know every single council are very passionate about affordable housing. I know that. But they're very, you know, cautious to really act immediately on this issue, because we don't see the people here saying, hey, we want this, we are suffering, we are dying, we don't have houses, we are homeless. We don't see those people come to the council meeting. We see the people who came for, you know, to reserve, for historic preservation, for animals, for trees, for everything those things, because those peoples, they don't need houses. They already living very good life, they have very good income, they don't need to go and work to be, when they have time to come and advocate for this stuff. I'm not saying this is not important. It is important, but to me, as a council member, is a priority. What come first? I will be supportive of this, but hopefully, we need to have a serious conversation about affordable housing, especially during this time for Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Well, how do I follow that? I'll second it. Affordable housing, I think you said it best. I did want to make sure that Ann Russ had had an opportunity, if you had the answer to Mayor Protem's question.
I do. So, these estimates were done over a year ago, so I just want to qualify it. The building relocation estimate that we had was almost $242,000. That does not include the rehabilitation and the adaptive reuse of that structure. That was around $662,000. Those costs will be the university's costs.
Yeah, I just ask you that question because I saw, if we keep our parking lot and if the university donate the house, we come, and still at the end of the day, the whole parking lot is us, is ours, and the university building is ours. You know, that's what I was thinking. We can pay for the move and have it on our land. And, you know, that was just an option. But I don't know, this is, it seemed like done deal. And my vote is nothing, it's only one.
I have a question, actually, for anyone that knows this. If after the 40 years, the university has no use for the house, does the house revert back to the city and the land, or is it just the house only?
It's the house and the land. It's the land that's being sold, but the house will become a fixture on the land.
Okay. All right. I think, you know, the comments that people have made about the house, I think it's quite important to talk about preserving this house in particular, because it's the original house. So I find great value in doing that. I am not a fan of, you know, giving up the lot at this juncture. You know, I wish we had opportunity to navigate other things, but I think we did have an opportunity last year, and we kind of, kind of didn't act on it. I am going to support this tonight, but I also have to say that we have opportunity moving forward through action and moving quickly on other things that are human right related within our community. And I hope that our council does act just as fast when we're acting on something like this tonight. So I'm going to be supportive of it. Any other comments? Here in none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Motion, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mims.
Sorry. Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 11, library parking. Coordinates amended in Title IX, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter IV, entitled Parking Regulations to Facilitate Library Curbside Service. First consideration, could I get a motion for it?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Thomas.
All right, can we have presentation by staff?
Thanks for having me here tonight. The library started curbside pickup on June 4th as part of our phased reopening. It's going really well. The plan seems to be working. So far, we've served about 400 people through curbside pickup, and almost 2,000 items have been distributed through that and postal mail. Obviously, a key part of curbside service is having parking available for folks coming in to retrieve their materials. And we're requesting the change from our parking spots to go from 20 to 10 minutes just to facilitate that quick turnover of curbside pickup time. We anticipate expanding the hours of curbside as we move closer to a full reopening. And we're asking for this to be from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And that, when the library fully reopened, we would anticipate reverting back to the 20-minute spots to allow people to come into the building. With the 20-minute spots, now people are more inclined to park and then do other downtown business, thinking that they'll have time to run out and do an errand and come back. So that's the request we're making. Does anyone have any questions?
That's good. My question is, like, the people will ask you for the name of the book and how that, and you go and give them, or how that work?
That's a great question. So this is done by appointment. We start with, the first rollout was only for people who had holds already placed when the library was closed. We've now moved into accepting new holds. So you place a hold, when you get your notice, it gives you all the details of how to schedule an appointment, and then how the process works.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. See in none, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes. Motion passed to seven to zero. Item 12, Adoption of City Council 2020 to 2021 Strategic Plan. Resolution adopted Iowa City 2020 through 2021 Strategic Plan Priorities. Could I get a motion to approve? The resolution? Thomas?
Seconded by Mims.
Mims, all right. Staff presentation?
Certainly. Hello, council, good evening. I'm Ashley Monroe, Assistant City Manager. So tonight's resolution will adopt the 2020-2021 Strategic Plan Priorities. Council began this process in early March of this year and summarized your priorities and current issues and resulted in seven objectives. They were modified slightly from the prior strategic plan, and I'll just highlight the main ideas of these strategic plan objectives and answer any questions. So the seven objectives contained in your strategic plan will include advance social justice, racial equity, and human rights, demonstrate leadership and climate action, strengthen community engagement and intergovernmental relations, invest in public infrastructure, facilities, and fiscal reserves, foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city, enhance community mobility for all residents, and promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. This final strategic objective resulted in the need for us to put it in the late packet. Just missed a copy and paste when creating the resolution. I'll take any questions that you have about adopting the plan.
I, is this us, we can talk now, or?
You can ask questions, yes.
I guess when you read it again, because I really would like to propose, before you approve this, since later tonight, we're going to have a resolution. And in that, in number two on the resolution, we saying creation of new affordable housing plan, I would like to suggest we add this to this strategic plan where we was talking about adding the word "plan" and last time. If you can read that part, and the, I don't know how can we add this without, before approve it. I really don't know. But that's my suggestion.
Okay, so if I understand, you just want me to repeat the section header that says Foster Healthy Neighborhoods and Affordable Housing Throughout the City.
And only the section where it say, yeah, creation plan.
So then the one sub-objective is to identify new efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet long-term needs throughout the community. That was what was discussed in the meeting.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I'm just asking if the council agrees. Since we have this anyway on the resolution that we're going to pass tonight, and you have that sentence, say, creation of new affordable housing plan, why we don't add this to the strategic plan?
I know that that was something that I did talk about at our last meeting, adding that word "plan" and what that really means, where we're not, where we really do look in depth into what we're doing for affordable housing. And, because we have some things over here, some things over here, which will probably continue. But if you have more of a solid plan, a comprehensive plan, I think that there'll be more conversation that'll guide our future acts with tax dollars, so that we can really be informed of how we're going to combat affordable housing within our community. So I am fully supportive of adding the word "plan."
Is this, are we asking questions of staff? Are we talking among each other now?
Yes, and actually, you're exactly correct. What we're going to do is we're going to hold further comments amongst us after we have public discussion. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
All right. If no other further staff questions, then I'm going to ask anyone from the public to address this topic, and I see Megan. And please keep your comments to no more than three to five minutes.
Okay, yes, my name is Megan Marcello. I am at 2916 Sweetbrier. I just wanted to ask whether this is the appropriate time to vote on this, adopting this resolution, considering the special meeting later- special meeting later tonight. And two of the, two of the points that are in the strategic plan and seem to be directly impacted by or could be by community feedback at seven o'clock, including the advancement in social justice, racial equality, human rights, uh, as well as the strengthening community engagement and intergovernmental relations. And it seems to me that passing this prior to the community discussion at seven, um, could indicate, or at least would perhaps indicate to me, um, a show of bad faith and just not getting off to a good start, um, for the discussion at seven. And that's it.
Thank you. And we have Madonna.
Hello, uh, my name is Madonna White. I live at 125 Tass Speedway. I think the council needs to be applauded for the fact that you'll, you put this strategic plan together in March. And you are addressing highly, uh, relevant issues in your strategic plan. And that is what this is, is a strategic plan. Tonight's special meeting is hoping to address two of the items that you're listing in your strategic plan. But I think the way the strategic plan is laid out is superb. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madonna. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Um, with respect to, to adding the word plan, Maz, are you talking about adding it into the header, foster, um, foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city or into the, into the first bullet under that? Identifying new efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing.
Yeah, on the bullet, you know, yes. Yeah.
Because if we're talking about amending, what you could just replace identify with plan.
You know, I really don't, you know, remember the wording now, but I remember last time we're trying to do it, but, uh, it was in like kind of agreement. But now you are, you are, we have on the resolution coming tonight that we wanna be serious about it. And we said that we're gonna have creation of new affordable housing plan. Then if put that in our strategic plan for the, for next year, that's mean, that's really look serious, I guess. And now we need to add that. Well, I guess, Lee, can you give us like some, like sentence if you can add the word plan and see how it look like so that people, you know, you can give them idea?
I think Weiner's suggestion would be fine. You could swap identify with plan and we, we would move forward with, with the understanding that the council desires a plan.
So Maz, the, the sentence would read, if you change that one verb out, it would read plan new efforts to expand and adapt cities affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet long-term needs throughout the community.
Hmm, no. What about if we put plan on the head, uh, like affordable housing plan? On the header?
Well, oh. The way I'm reading this, Maz, uh, inserting plan there wouldn't make as much grammatical sense as the way in which uh, Janice is suggesting to do it. To say affordable housing plan is, is a different use of the word plan. Then I think we're, the language in that letter is, is structured.
Okay, hold on. What I really want is creation. Like, we have create a solid, like, a solid affordable housing plan. Like, we need to know that. We, we need to figure out a plan for affordable housing. And we, we will work, of course, you know, the details is later because can work with another, like, uh, organization who care about affordable housing such as Habitat, such as like Affordable Housing Coalition, all those people. Maybe they can come together later and come out with a plan. But like a, a serious plan to, for this, because every year we have something here, something there. 10% for 10 years and we have, like, uh, those are small stuff of affordable housing. But what I mean when I say plan, we need to plan out, like a big project for affordable housing. It's spending a lot of money, maybe borrow money, bond for affordable housing. Like, we bond for, uh, the bed mall, we bond for everything. If we don't have money, we can just bond for it. It like, you know, borrow money for it. That's what I mean. Like, we, we need at least, uh, meaning of that. Just come up with the language. That's what I really mean.
Uh, this is Pauline. I think, I, I liked, uh, Council Weiner's, uh, suggestion that plan fits best in that first bullet. And rather than identify. And then I do like that Mazaher about adding create, plan and create, because we could plan till forever, but we actually need to create also. So I think I like your suggestion, plan and create new efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing. I, I would agree with that.
Yes, create, yes, that's what makes sense to me too.
Well, I mean, if it could, um, it's sort of a little bit odd to be, but you could say cre- create a new plan to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
How about identify new efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing plan and neighborhood improvement strategies, et cetera?
I think that's, I, I like that so that we actually have the word plan in there as our mayor's protestant is advocating for, but also it's, it's saying, here's where we are now and we need to expand on, on that. I think that's a good way to word it.
And I think especially since we have a few, um, things in the work such as the South District, um, the University City. You know, kinda just looking at all of that, um, broad picture and trying to figure out solutions. And, and, and new things moving forward. So, um, I, I think that does meet uh, the intent of what we're, what we're wanting to do as a council.
I think that makes sense. I like Eleanor's suggestion. I mean, we have an affordable housing plan, but basically we've accomplished like 14 of the 15 steps. So it's obviously time to update, um, add new steps as we move forward. And I think that would get the word plan in there as, uh, Mazaher wants and, um, indicate that we're not just going to pick projects here and there, but we're gonna develop a long-term plan once again. Um, that will probably encompass a lot of things we're already doing, but possibly look at new and additional, um, projects that we haven't thought about yet.
Yeah, I, I think it's funny. You know, I've always viewed the affordable housing plan as a working document, which we're constantly expanding and revising as we move forward. So, yeah, that seems fine.
Okay, then let's, um, withdraw the motion and rest, if that's what you're wanting to do, and restate the motion to, um, add the word plan to the, that first bullet after affordable housing. Let me get a second.
Is there anybody that would like to redraw the, the previous motion?
Who made the original motion, they have to withdraw it, don't they?
Yes.
So that would.
Kelly, who made it?
Thomas.
Okay, I will withdraw it.
Okay.
And can I get a second?
You don't need to withdraw, you don't need a second for the withdrawal. I think we just need a new motion.
All right.
To adopt the plan as amended by this discussion to add the word plan in the first bullet under foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city. And you can just say so moved and get a second.
By Mims.
Second by Sala.
All right. Any council discussion?
Uh, the only thing I wanna say, yeah, thank you for being patient and doing that. This is great. And, uh, the, the second thing is, I, I think we are, our understanding now, and we will be serious about this. We really want to create a plan to try to solve the affordable housing. You know, regardless what the language is, but you know, that's the notion of this. And thank you again.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 13, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. So 13A. Historic Preservation Commission. Um, one vacancy to fill, a three-year term, July 1st through 2020. Um, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Council discussion on this item? Could I get a motion? Well, let's, yeah, let's talk about this item. Um, and I typically, we might talk about 13A and 13B together. Um, but I think we'll do 13A separately today.
I was just gonna say, there's one, uh, one applicant, a male, and the requirement for gender balance is a male. And I think Carl Brown, uh, would certainly meet the qualifications that we would want on that commission. So, um, I would nominate Carl Brown for that.
This is Pauline. I, I, I agree. I believe he lives in the Longfellow District.
Yeah, he's on Sheridan, so he should be.
Yes.
Any other discussion on that item or? Are people, all right, so, uh, we had Councilor Mims make the motion and I'm gonna, uh, um, Counselor Taylor second it. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item 13B Telecommunicat- Telecommunications Commission. Two vacancies to fill a three-year term, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. And this one is two vacant, there's two vacancies, um, one female and one nun. So I do wonder, what are thoughts here? We could kind of delay the appointment and wait until we get a, another applicant.
Well, James Pierce, I think is qualified. He's been on before and he could fill the one that doesn't matter on genders. So I guess I would suggest that we move forward with that appointment. We can appoint a female when we get a female applicant.
Okay.
This is Pauline, I agree.
So we have a, a motion by, uh, to appoint James Pierce by, uh, Counselor Mims, seconded by Counselor Taylor. Any discussion? And I know James, I think he'll do a great job. I mean, I, yep.
Okay.
Any other, any other discussion? All right, we'll do roll call, wait. So I also wanna do, well, we'll delay the appointment for the second because they're not there anyway, so. So we'll do a, a motion, um, roll call, please, for James Pierce.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yeah.
Motion passed to seven to zero. And we will keep, um, that other vacancy will remain open until it is filled. Item number 14, this is announcements of vacancies new. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m., July 28th, 2020. And.
Mayor, can we get a motion to accept correspondence?
Yes. Um, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Weiner.
Second Sala.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Sala. Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yeah.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item 15, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Public Art Advisory Committee, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. July 1st through, um, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are on to item number 16. Um, and we're gonna hear from Ryan Longdecker with U I S G.
Hi, council. Um, don't have too much tonight. Uh, to, um, kind of everyone at the university is waiting for tomorrow. Um, U Iowa plans to announce their fall COVID-19, um, plan for returning students to campus. Um, and Iowa State and you and I already announced theirs. It looks as though Iowa will, um, start August 24th. Um, that is, seems to be preset in stone and will not be, um, moving earlier like, uh, Iowa State and you and I. Um, what's currently unknown right now to students and what we're hoping for tomorrow is announcement about what will happen between Thanksgiving and, um, winter break. Uh, whether we will be brought back in person, whether it will be virtual. Um, so that's kind of one of the big things that students are waiting for now. Um, and outside that, I really don't have anything. Um, tonight at the 7:00 p.m. meeting, I plan to, um, let others speak from the community. Um, I think, you know, I've made, um, statements to you and USG has made its positions pretty clear, um, that we're supportive of protesters and we are supportive of Black Lives Matter. And we are supportive of, um, you know, changes in our community and progressing forward as a community together, um, to battle racial injustices. And so, um, all that I will offer, uh, tonight is just that I encourage you to really listen, um, to the people that are coming to speak tonight from our community. And, um, to listen to them tonight and outside of council, because this is obviously going to be a, uh, not a, a one-week thing. This will be, you know, um, months, if, if not years of, um, work to, um, tear down these racial institutions and, and make these fixes. So, um, that's all that I have tonight, and, um, thank you for all your work that you're doing.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. And moving on to City Council Updates. Any meetings or community events you wanna talk about?
Um, there's a JEC meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 for the first time since I've been on council. So it's by, by Zoom. They, I guess they've been a little busy out there for the first two nights of the year, so it'll be interesting, I haven't, to, to, uh, report back at our next meeting.
I'll just mention, I'll just mention on the, hello? On the lighter side, baseball is.
All right. And I know that, um, tonight at 7:00 p.m. we do have another meeting and encouraging the public to, uh, tune in to that meeting and be a part as well. Um, I know that many of us have been, um, really, um, contemplating, uh, the meeting tonight, have been in a lot of conversations. And so, um, yeah, invite people back at 7:00 p.m. tonight. Hearing nothing else, any, um, updates from our city manager?
No updates tonight, Mayor.
And Ashley Monroe, our Assistant City Manager?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
And our city attorney, Eleanor?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
And Kelly, our city clerk?
Nothing for me either.
All right. If nothing else for the good of the cause today, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Taylor, so moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We are adjourned until our next meeting at 7:00 p.m. See you soon.